Covered. Okay, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting. Call it to order at 5:00 on the dot. With myself being present, I'll officially take roll call. Cheryl Kessel.
Here.
Ben Kramer.
Here.
Jerry Mucio.
I'm not here.
Becky Keck.
Here.
And Robin Asmundusstad.
Yeah.
Alright, first item is general public comment. Would you like me to read through that? No, okay. I don't believe anyone is here to make a public comment and you don't have anybody on the Zoom pending. Alright, moving into reports, the Parks and Recreation Manager will provide an update on the following items.
Before we begin, I would like to request that we move item 6C Parks and Recreation Strategic Planning to after item 7A. So basically, we're moving it to the end of the agenda items. But that still will not be, there will be no action taken on that. It's just for discussion. But because we have a pretty robust schedule here, agenda here, we thought it would be best to put that at the end. And so we're going to move, move that one around so we can make sure to get to the things that we absolutely need to get to this evening. Okay? Okay, so on reports, you had a report included with your packet. And I have just a few updates and a couple of things to add. One of them being that under the Clubhouse repairs and upgrades, the floor in the ladies lounge has been completely repaired. So that, that piece is done. We're still waiting to hear on the others. In addition, no, I'm going to talk about that later. The, under Copper Penny, I wanted to update that the Public Works and Crossroads Developer and team will be meeting on February 2nd to discuss the surfacing and improving the surfacing around the pickleball court at Copper Penny Park and putting up a barrier to keep the balls from rolling down into the into the ditch. So I wanted to keep you updated on that. These note the MLK Day of Service at Big Springs, also known as Crystal Springs Trail. On Monday, the 16th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00, the Friends, along with our volunteer, she's also a volunteer for the Friends, Marcia Fouts will be leading that cleanup. So if you're not doing anything on Monday, it is your chance to go out and do a day of service. Any questions about anything up to that point? And then I wanted, I had added trails onto the agenda, but then I forgot to, I didn't update you on this. Regarding our trails, currently Felicia Coats and I are working, and Shell are working to interview, we're interviewing companies to create a trails master plan for us. We have $40,000 in the budget for that. We've met with one, we've interviewed one, we have another one to go next week. And then we'll make a selection to bring, bring back to you guys in February. Okay? And that's going really well. And then also I wanted to follow up with regarding the public speaker that was at your meeting in November. I did have an opportunity to follow up with her as you directed. And she is understanding that the park plan is well along, far enough along that we aren't going to be making any changes to put a pool into the, into the property. She did understand that, didn't, didn't have a comment when we were the other beyond that, other than the pickleball court. She has concerns with the noise. She's done some research. And she feels like they're going to be too noisy for the area. So when we start our more aggressive follow-up, public engagement on that, I told her we would document that and then reach back out to her regarding, that I would let you all know what her comments were. And we may hear that from other people. And that's all I have on reports.
Okay, thank you. And next item is minutes. Would anybody like to discuss this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th meeting as written.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Hi. Right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're moving into item 6, which is discussion items only, starting with 6A, the Boards and Commissions absentee policy.
So I provided for you your, the ordinance language. And basically the thing that you need to remember, and we just wanted to have it as an official item, that if you are unable to attend more than four meetings, let's just read it. Boarding Committee Commission Member who is absent for regular board or commission meetings from October 1st to September 30th shall be deemed to have vacated his or her appointment without further action being taken by either the board, the committee, or the town. And it does say the responsibility of the chairperson, however, I believe that should be the liaison is responsible for the chairperson to know, but we keep track of those numbers. And so if we're getting to that point, typically we reach out long before you get to that point to just remind you how important it is for you to attend the meetings. So we appreciate you paying attention to that. If for some reason you have to miss a meeting, we certainly understand. Just be sure and let us know as soon as you absolutely can. That's why when I send the emails out with your packet, we make sure that, you know, I ask you to reach back out to us just so we can make sure we have, we have it formed. Now having a six member helps us with that, an alternate helps us with that so that in the event that someone can't be here, then Robin can step in and be a voting member of the team at that point. And then also, if you have not signed up on our website for the notify me, under notify me on, on our homepage of the website, you will get there the weekly updates that the town manager sends out with everything that's going on regarding events and Public Works, Parks and Rec, et cetera. And that's, that's for the general public. And in addition, you'll get notifications when the packets are posted to the website. So we will continue to send those to you. But you know, sometimes we don't, actually, I think this one was posted before, before I got it out to you. So you can always be looking at that, at that site if you're waiting, or if you haven't heard from us, and we had this situation that we didn't have, our, our email went into a junk or spam. And so, yeah, we had to, we got, we got that figured out. But just so you know, it's a really good resource to get council meeting agendas, you know, if you want to know what's going on, it's, it's a good, good resource. And that's all I have on that item. Does anyone have any questions regarding that item?
Okay. It was just the number of absences that missed. I feel like it used to be three.
Yeah, they changed it. Yeah, they, they redid it in 2018, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, next item, 6B, Holiday Event Debrief.
So, um, I'm sure you have all read your staff report. We had a very successful Santa event. The purpose of having this as an agenda item is because many of you were present for that event as in a volunteer position. We were hoping to get your insights and perspective on the event. You know, some of the, some of the considerations, some of the comments that came to us were the length that it should be lengthened, that the photos should be different. And, and we agreed that was not working super well for us. The carolers were nice addition, the the crafts were fantastic, really well. People really liked that. And so so, yes. So tell us your feedback from the holiday events, and then I'll add some things in if we need to.
I think the pictures are, taking pictures is always just a problem.
Yeah.
And everybody has phones now. I just think we just don't need that anymore. And it frees us up for the crafts too, because they don't have to wait for their picture. If they wanted to make an ornament, they could just go to town.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, the pictures slow things down so much that it's really, I mean, we could do double the volume if, if it was like, hey, take your picture, or we have people standing by to say, here, here, give us your camera, we'll snap a couple of pictures for you. That would go so much faster. And then the other thing is we have this big line, but instead of maybe just one line up the center of the park, that could kind of snake through past the cocoa table, past the crafts table. This could kind of, it could kind of be an event that you're going through. And if we have that, isn't there a, the sleigh being, I mean, is there sleigh in the works?
Yes.
That that could be a secondary place where a family could sit and take a picture as a group. And maybe it could be kind of a, you know, it's, it's a holiday wonderland where you're coming through and you're doing this over here, you're doing that over there. But you know, it's, you can kind of travel around a mosey as you want. The people who want to spend an hour there, that's fine. If people just want to run up and get their Santa picture and blast out, that would make sense too. I think there's some opportunities to change that, but yeah, the pictures, I mean, I think they're neat, the Polaroids are neat, but it was really problematic loading them and taking them and.
It has been
Yeah.
Problem since
Going.
Yeah. That's a good one. So there are definitely opportunities based on what you're saying for us to reconsider how we do the event. What about the inside versus outside? Did anyone have any comments on that?
I like having it outside, as long as the weather is, I think it was colder this year than last, but it was.
But everybody knew to wear a sweatshirt. It wasn't, that was not a big deal.
I mean, the water is so tiny usually, it just always, and then people parking lot lined up.
Just also a comment, the Downtown Business Alliance is considering, at least some of the businesses in downtown are considering having some additional events in their shops or along, out in front of their shops that could enhance the, the, the event as well. So of course, that is completely up to them. We're, we're out of that, but I think that would be a nice, a nice addition for those who are, you know, parking over in the lot they can walk by and, and, and do that. And we could always potentially, if we, if we know, if we've got a weather report, we know it's going to be a little chillier, we could possibly rent a few heaters from, from birth and bring those in just for a place for folks to get warm if it's going to be that chilly, but you know, I did have a comment from someone standing in line saying, you know, you should make this, you know, an hour longer because we're, we're trying to, you know, people are trying to do everything on that day. They're trying to do the parade and they're trying to get to us. And so that timing has the way I've understood it, we've done it the same way as long as I've been here and before, probably since 2008, is that we don't really have the capacity to handle the number of people that would come if we didn't do it when it was interfering with the parade a little bit. People have to choose what, what's going on. There was also something going on up in Jerome that day. So you know, it's, it's really a choice. And, and our Santa, if we want to continue with our same Santa, he's, he's a two-hour guy. And that's it. So unless we started earlier, which would be cooler, you know, there's all kinds of challenges with that. So we'll revisit the, the conversation again next year. Although I wondered if anybody had had any comments regarding the regarding the caroling event that we did not have. No.
I did have some people come into the brewery asking about it and why it wasn't happening this year. So that was it. Just one small group of people that came in. I think they kind of had it in their idea of like when it fell last year. So they showed up. It must be this night, but that was the only
Yeah.
Feedback I heard.
I mean, it's, it's a lovely event. And if community members want to come together on a specific day and do that, we did have, I mean, if we had a volunteer who wanted to, you know, take that and, and, and run with it, then you know, that we could potentially bring it back. But quite honestly, it was really nice for staff to not have to, after the, the big event that we had, it was nice not to have to do that. So it freed up time for us for the other things that we're working on, like trails and parks. So so ornaments, I think I covered everything. Oh, the indoor, outdoor, yeah, we did talk about that. Okay, any other comments or concerns? I mean, again, we'll bring this up to talk about, we just kind of wanted to get your input while it was fresh. And so we could document it and put it in our notes for next year. Yes.
Kimberly Brooks was new this year.
Yeah.
And so I wonder if they'd feedback on that. They were kind of quiet where I was. I wonder if anybody heard any feedback.
They were kind of anon, I didn't even kind of notice.
I know, we were busy with class. And maybe just having a sound system with Christmas music, getting Toby back in there at Christmas with the sound system could, you know, serve the same purpose, create the same, you know, they were cute and all.
Did we pay, we paid them?
We did. It was $200 for, for one hour. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Couldn't hear them from where we were.
Yeah. And we deliberately didn't have music because we didn't want to interfere with them. And then it just kind of, I think, especially, you know, the Santa line, I, my comment was, and Ben, I'm sure you'll agree was that they, you know, it's like these huge families are coming up and they want each kid or the group of kids, then they want one with grandma, and then they want one with, you know, so if, if we've got, you know, we've got to figure out a way to kind of move that along. But either maybe we have Santa in the sleigh as the photo op, or maybe we have the sleigh off to the side and we say the kids get a picture with Santa, the families, you can do your family pictures over here at the, at the sleigh, sleigh, and then we can kind of move that along.
Well, a lot of the slowness was this kind of like, oh, oh, no, 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 you stand over here. What, here, let me pick you up and put you on this, it's like this whole thing. It's almost like Santa should be stationary. People should get in front of him. He's, you know, says some nice things and then they move on. And I don't know that the, I don't know if the knee is really the most important part of that. And that was really, there was a lot of very focus, lots of focus on that.
Okay, I, I appreciate that feedback and.
And we can, you can always reference whoever's up there. You know, we have this line of people, we're just going to have to get, you know, a picture and.
That's how it works in crafts, in the gazebo.
We let him say it.
Yeah, but maybe something or, or even just a, you know, a bench in front of Santa where it's like the kids would come and sit in and, you know, he could talk to them, something like that, that would be a little more.
Okay.
And then let's put a slide.
Slide right down to the hot. And then I think Jerry had mentioned to us about actually mixing, because the packets are being mixed individually. And I mean, it seemed to be going pretty well, but, and we had talked about putting the cocoa in the container and pumping it from the container. The problem with that, the challenge with that is that the cocoa, you know, what it happens when you get it. Yeah, you have to stir it all the time or shake it or mix it up.
Those things kept the water pretty hot.
Yeah.
They were good.
They were good. So we did determine we need more, though that would be helpful for us to have more of those. A couple more just to keep it going. And yeah, everything went smoother than any other time I've done it. So I thought it was good too. Okay, good. That's it for that, I think.
Okay. And since there was a little bit of rearranging, we're going to move into item 6D, which is the Cabo Park Plan. And we're going to discuss the status of the park plan and grant updates.
Yes. This is, this should be, this is a very exciting time for Parks and Rec Commission because this is a really big deal for Cabo Park to get this, this project and for us to be able to do it with, completely with grant money. So we're very excited about it. We are well on our way. The, the bid documents have been posted for bid for contractors to bid on the project. NACOG is handling that for us. If anyone wants to bid on the project, they are to contact NACOG because they want to know who's taking out the packets in case there's any addendums that come along that they can contact them. So the actual bid packet, a lot of times for things that the town is bidding, the, the bid packet will actually be on the website. We will just have the bids, the news release on the website with the contact. They have two contractors who have already reached out to them. One that, that we had already been kind of communicating about a long time ago about the projects, though. So we think it's going to turn out well. The timeline for that, I gave you a copy of the bid specs so that you can see what was, what was requested of the contractor to supply. And so you can take a look at that. There's not, did I give myself a copy of that? And I'll tell you, this was between Shell and Felicia and I, this was a big project. This was the only piece that we had to do for the and it took us a long time to do it because there's, you have to have a lot of detail because you don't want to leave something out that, that is important for you to have. So it's, it's very detailed in what we're looking for, what they need to remove, what surface treatment we're looking for. The concrete that's going to need to be poured. The playground area and what we're looking for. We had to be very broad in our requests, even though you have already looked at an image of a playground system that we would like to have for that park. Having to go through the bid process, doing this federal grant is much, it's, it's much more complicated. And we had to go through the, the bid process. Therefore, that company that we were working with that had provided us with a lot of information ahead of time, we had to step away from that. But we use that system and the details of that system in the specs so that we are looking, so they understand that we're getting, you know, we're looking for something very specific. So all the amenities, the fencing, we finally came to a agreement on. And one thing I want to mention is the solar on page 70. Page 70, I didn't, I didn't think you wanted the whole bid document, so we didn't go there. On page 70, under, near the bottom, under solar shade table with wifi capability. I wanted to let you know that that project is actually being bid for, no, not bid. That project is in, in the process, we're trying to get a grant for it through T-Mobile. I may have mentioned that before. I don't know if I did. Natalie Harlan, who is a volunteer, is doing the, the work on the grant for us. And if it all comes together the way we hope it will, then we will have a very cool first, this particular company, and we haven't seen anything like them in Arizona, a picnic table with a solar shade cover that will provide wifi to those in the park and charging capabilities for their devices with ADA accessibility. So there will be one, one less seating for, for those purposes. That's coming along really well. That, that grant is due the end of March. We will, we do need letters of support. So February, I will talk to you about that and ask for, if, if you would be willing to do that as a group. And then whoever the chair is would sign the document that will be submitting with the T-Mobile grant. In addition, the you can see on the back of your paper, there is an outline of the project itself and where where we discussed putting particular items. So there's room for the swing set, there's room for the multi-function, large plate climbing unit, the Ramada, the barbecue. The basketball court is the only existing thing on the property. We have the sidewalk coming in, nicely fencing for the park. And in addition, that table will go, you can, since you have a copy, we're talking about placing it just inside the entrance because we need to have a sidewalk that will go to it. And we actually put that table in the bid, in the project budget through the CDB, CDBG. And so they were going to actually move those funds or request to move those funds so that we can have the concrete pad built instead if we get the grant. And then we'll be able to have that all done at one time with the contractor that's doing the work. And then when the table arrives, it's quite a lengthy process. It takes about 20 weeks max to get it. So we hope to, we should hear about the award in April. And then we'll be able to order it and have it ready for when the park is complete and we can, and we can move down, down that road. Does anybody have any questions about anything that you see? Please look it over, the specs, and if you see something that stands out as something that should be brought to our attention, let us know.
When are the bids due?
Okay, so I'm going to go through the timeline right now. We started the advertisement on the 4th. The second run will be the 8th. And that goes in the Verde Independent. They sent out on January 4th, they sent out an email notice to playground companies to apply for the bid. Apparently, because the project has a lot of construction along with the playground piece, it's, it's going to be a little challenging. So we, we hope that we end up with an actual playground company to bid on it. We'll see how that works out. On the 19th, next week, there is a pre-bid meeting that will happen here at the Clubhouse. So those who were bidding can come and talk to us, ask us questions about the project. We go take them down to the, to the site and let them know, let them get a look at it. The bids are due back to the 10. The bids are due back to the town on February ninth. At four P M. Any questions?
Then when will it be, when will it be awarded?
Well, it depends on who bids on it and if we can afford the bid and how long it takes us to get through the selection process. And once we get through the selection process and we choose someone, then, uh, they will, they will actually be presenting us. With the timeline in that. So then we'll know more as to when the project can actually start.
Only thing I see on here is just under the swings. I think you have expect to have an infant swing as well. And I just know that we've had to take a number, a number of kids out of those over the years, just in, in cottonwood. Um, you know, where the, the legs get stuck through, usually older kids, it shouldn't be in the adult swing. I, I mean, that would be the only thing that I saw in there that would maybe be being open to something that doesn't provide that entrapment hazard. But.
Yeah.
I know they're, they're like really standard, but we started getting away from it because, I mean, I personally cut two or three off of, of people in the community, you know?
Yeah, I, I actually heard of that too. And they, they do have really nice swing buckets now with like a seatbelt thing. That could be accessible as well. We'll definitely take a look at that and see what, what we come up with. We, we had initially, we were just gonna put a hoopla swing like we have a, uh, copper penny. But we remembered that the kids that came out to talk to us when they really dearly loved the swings. And so even some adults that we talked to were like, we love swings, swings are the best. And I know there are real danger too. There's a lot of stuff around them, but, um, but you know, there, it is what it is.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
No. All right. Moving on, item seven, eight, the twenty twenty-three concerts in the park. So we're going to discuss, consider and act upon elements of the twenty twenty-three concert in the park series.
So for, for those of you who are new with us, I want to just kind of give you a little background. The, we've been doing the concerts. Uh, probably eight or nine of them a year for many years since two thousand and five. I want to say two thousand and eight. And, uh, our attendance has grown significantly. They're very popular events in the community. And our challenge is, so the selection process for bands. And we start, typically we start earlier. We got, we're behind, like we are on a lot of things. Um, we start a little earlier. We sent a, uh, request for, uh, proposal out to bands. Um, to apply. It's an application process. And we have a selection committee who, uh, works on choosing those bands. Once we get all of the information in, we usually give them. I think we, we're giving them about three weeks this time to turn in all of the things that we request. Um, and along with music samples, so the selection committee can hear the music samples. Um, and, and we have a mix of how we do that. We have bands, um, returning bands out of popularity. If people, if we know the community really likes them and they give us comment, we'll bring back the same bands. Um, but we'd like to bring in some new ones as well each year. And, uh, so typically. Eight to nine concerts a year. We've had direction from, uh, our. Leaders that due to the fact of the many projects that we have on our plate right now. That Steph has on our plate right now with Aviara Park, the Trails. Um, and, uh, and then Salmone Monchini Park, once that comes on board. That they would like us to find some ways to cut back our hours on community events. And in order for us to, and we, we're not really big fans of that because we, we don't. Care so much, but we have to, you know, do what's right. And, uh, and the concerts are the best, one of the best parts of our job. We love them because we get to get out with the public. So we didn't want to cut back on the concerts. Uh, which was the suggestion that we just do fewer concerts per year to cut back on staff time. It still takes us the same amount of time to hire the bands. That doesn't, you know, doesn't, um, alleviate any time for us there. It's just working the concerts. We like that presence and being there. But, um, our idea was that we could potentially heap a few more concerts out. If the commission had, um, any desire to assist in, in that capacity. And be able to actually run a concert and, uh, along with a staff member. So we do have our ambassador. So we would always have a staff member there. It just wouldn't, um, wouldn't be shell awry. Uh, it would be Jim Mast, who's our star, um, ambassador. Uh, and he would be responsible for. You know, just making sure everything's going smoothly. He'd be responsible for the money and handing the money off to, um, the police at the end of the night. Um, and then we also enlisted the help of a former vice mayor. To do announcements during that time because that's usually what are, what are, uh, parks and rec commissioners. That used to be parks and rec commissioners were much more involved in the concert process and actually attended every concert and, um, along with staff. And, um, and so. Uh, where was I going with that? It's coming. Uh, we would, um. So we have an announcer because that's the part that nobody wants to get up and have to talk in front of the crowd except Ben. And he's okay with it as long as you give him a script. Uh, so that is basically where just the background and information for you. Um, let me make sure I didn't miss anything. So we did go ahead and create a schedule. That would allow seven concerts this year. We did eight last year. So it is a slight cut. But, um, and so we're just wondering if we would have any commissioners. Who would like to participate in, um. Participate and thank you, uh, in helping run a concert. We need three of them covered. Shell and I will do four between the two of us. And if we had three concerts, so by that it would mean coming at about six o'clock to the park. Meeting Jim Mast, the, um, staff member, helping set up the table, getting the raffle ticket sales ready to go. Um, assisting the volunteers to get signed in and giving them their tickets to go out and sell. Um, kind of, uh, keeping, helping with the money at the table. Um, Jim, uh, or the, the ambassador, whoever it is, if it's not Jim, will do a second count of all the funds. The police department comes, takes the funds to lock them up where they will be safe. And, um, and then the concert continues for about an hour after that. Uh, and it'd just be, you know, thanking the band, uh, and letting them know how to turn off the lights. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Occasionally, well, Jim checks the restrooms, so that isn't something that would need to be done. So would anyone be interested in taking on that role for a concert?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Okay.
I would, but I can't guarantee my veil daily. I can always. I'm the last one. Cones? Yeah. Okay. I can do cones and lights at the end of the night.
So that would be awesome. If, if you could just set out the cones before the concert. Um, and so that there, and we'll have designated, we'll have a, you know, direction for everything that you need to do. Probably what we'll do is make sure that we are, you know, you can always come and, um. Uh, shadow us i- in a concert. You guys have already done that. Um, so you have that, you know, that experience. You pretty much know what we do and can, can handle it. So, um, so before you is the list of the, of the concert dates. I want to give you a little background on, on our choosing of the dates. Um, we have one in May. We started a little early this year. We have one in June and one in July. We typically do two in June, two in July, two in August, two in September. We broke it up a little bit because, um. The Downtown Business Alliance does their, uh, Friday, what's it, what's it called? A block party. On the final Friday of every month in June, May, June and July. So we were anticipating that that was their plan. And so we thought, well, okay, there's already that going on. And they have music and they have activities in the street. So we could get away with doing just one concert in each of those months. And, and residents are still, we don't want to short, you know, it's hard not to do as much as we do. Um, but we wanted to, um, have them, uh. Forgot, I just lost my train of thought. Uh, kind of spread things out. And so we did put two in August and two in September. Now. Well, it has not been confirmed that the Downtown Business Alliance is going to be doing all three block parties. But we have to get this schedule out to the bands, a call out for the bands. Right away because it's already getting really late. Um, and so we need. To have you approve these dates. And we'll just, you know, it'll be what it is. If they don't end up having the block parties or if they don't end up, um, uh, doing all three of them. You know, it's, it's gonna be what it is for this year and we can, we can make an adjustment for next year. So I think I covered. Everything. That I needed you to know about that.
I think the schedule looks good. The only thing that stands out to me is, um, the month gap between July to August. And how late the September one. That's just the only thing that stands out to me because. In past years, if there was a weather cancellation or whatnot, having that last September option as a backup is kind of a safe place to go. So I don't know if you wanted to squeeze that one up into between the July and August date, but that's my only.
We, we absolutely did have that conversation for exactly those same reasons. And we, um.
Might be something you have planned on your, your calendars that we don't know.
There's, uh, it's, um, Labor Day weekend, I think, is the thing that gets, gets in the way there a little bit. I, we'll have to look at it again. Do you remember?
Was the block party Labor Day weekend, fourth of July.
Oh, because they would have one at the end of July typically.
That period and we thought we would look at September sixteenth to be the alternate if there's. But I mean, we can revisit. I mean, I mean, it could be fine to move forward that because, um, how you mentioned the business alliance that gives. If it does condense to a single block party this summer, that July one could be the one that goes all out for. Because there is such a gap between those concert dates.
Keep in mind the other. Option we have, and we have done this before is, um. If we have a, a good number of really great bands, a lot of times that happens. We do the band selection. The committee does as a whole. And there's one band out there that we really want. But we only have seven concerts. Um, so we could, and especially, you know, with, with your. All participation and, and willingness, we could potentially add another concert in that gap. If, especially if we know the business alliance isn't gonna, you know, if they end up deciding not to do July. So we have a lot of flexibility in this, uh, and, and how we usually have handled that in the past. Is, uh, we will just call, once we've done the selection process. Um, we may call a band or two and just say, hey, if we were to put in another concert. You know, could, could you perform on that date? And, and just, you know, find out if they could. So we don't make it a whole big deal. It's a phone call or two and, um, and plug it in. And, you know, again, we would, you know, talk to you all as far as, you know. I, I, I'm pretty sure that Jerry would also be willing to help out with a concert. So if, if you're by yourself at a concert, we've got enough to cover, you know, an additional if, if we wanted to go there. So it gives us some flexibility in, in the process. If you're good with that.
I'm always right across the street. Whoever's volunteering that day has a question or something, just run over and come find me.
Well, and, and we can, we can be on call as well for any questions that, you know, come up. And, um, I'm also going to talk to the, our, um, police department. Because when, when ambassadors are there, they have police radios with them. Uh, Chief Taylor has requested that they always have their radios with them when they're volunteering in that, or when they're working in that capacity. And so, um, they have a direct line if anything is going on. I mean, we've. You know, I had a little lady fall one time and we, you know, had a bunch of people there and, and we just called Ben to come and. Pick her up.
Probably that one, that one concert, Ben?
Yeah.
Anyway, there, we have a lot of support. So I would also talk to Chief Taylor and just ask, especially on the nights that. You all are working for that little additional, you know, walkthrough of, of our officers and, um, and such. So, yeah. We'd get you covered. So what do you want to do?
I think you should just plan, go forward with these dates. I mean, you have it mapped out. You looked at all the other calendars. And I say just move forward with this and that gives the business alliance something to work off of and the rest of potential summary events. So. I think it's a good starting point. You can make changes if you need to based on what that happens with the bands. But I think sooner the better, just to solidify dates. That we set the post date as our budget schedule for twenty twenty-three as, as listed.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you. That's exciting.
All right. So now we come back to item six C, which is the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, I have to say you all do really good work. Um, the, so everybody participated in the opportunities and threats. Process before you is something that I don't have a copy yet. So what, what we did was compiled. Easy, because you were super thorough, compiled all of your, um, strengths and, or sorry, your. We included your strengths in there, your opportunities and your threats and put them into categories. Um, that, you know, we felt best fit. We're open to negotiation on that. And the categories aren't as important as really, um, looking at the, um, the items and prioritizing. So that's what we're gonna be doing this evening is prioritizing this list, uh, to, to get to our, to the top five. Priorities that best, um, it doesn't mean that anything else is not a priority. It will still be on, continue to be on the list to be considered. But we need to know what is the most important. To you of things that are on this list. Before we start on that list, let's, let's go back to the. And it's in front of you, the strengths and weakness sheet. And we did that whole process with you and collected your information. What we came up with on the strengths was the. What we came up with on the strengths was the top three, the, the, um, quality of events, volunteers and volunteering, staff accessed, grant funding, stack, staff accessed, grant funding, sorry. Um, those were all, uh, received the highest votes from you all, communication about parks and rec offerings, park access and existent, existence of Verde River access points were the, um, all of those things were the top six vote getters. And so I'd like you to have a conversation and um, define what your top five of those six would be. Does that make sense? Am I?
Top five of those six?
The top five of those six, ranking them one, two, three, four, five. So does, yeah.
Okay, just within strength. So number one is probably going to be one of those three that is already ranked number one.
Yeah, right. But there's three number one.
Right. Yeah. The actual number one is going to be one of those ones.
Right.
I mean, I think quality of events for top one, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah, we just have to figure out which one's number six. That's, I mean, isn't that what you're asking? Just eliminate one?
Thank you, Ben.
So like, I mean, I think while, while I think communication about parks and rec offerings is a strength, I don't know that it ranks as high as the quality, the volunteer, some of these other things. So to me, looking at that survey, that's the one that maybe I would, that I would drop from that top five.
Okay. That's fair. Drop that one.
So communication and, and PR offerings, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Out here offerings.
I mean, just like the other ones that are unranked, apparently they're important, but I don't know that I would have it in my.
Well, and keep in mind, we're, we're talking about, you know,
Greatest hits.
What you feel are the, the biggest strengths, exactly, the greatest strengths. So if quality of events, volunteers and volunteering, um, staff access to grant funding and park access and the Verde River access points are your top five, what you feel are the top five strengths of Parks and Recreation in Clarkdale.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if everybody agrees on that, I've, and, and it, it, you don't care on the order of it.
I mean, just.
I mean, the same order.
Yeah.
They just, okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. Alright, so now the weakness is going to be a little more challenging because you have to eliminate a couple more. So we have the limited resources, access to parks and neighborhoods, uh, in all neighborhoods, access, um, sorry, more public involvement, trails in Clarkdale, improve volunteer coordination, um, representation, impact, offer more classes, river education, opportunities for homebound. So those were the top six. And so, but there's actually two threes in there. Those shall trip to me. So we have to eliminate.
Yeah. So the way that they're numbered is based on your vote. So a lot of them have the same number of priorities. So number one, you all agreed on, and then, you know, number three, there was a tie. So even though strength is not as important if you have a top priority, I think on all the other categories, it's really important to say the number one weakness that you
Right.
have, and then so that we can prioritize them in later stages of the strategic.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to drop two of these.
Yeah.
To start with. Um.
Well, with six was our original lowest one.
Mm-hmm.
And it would make sense to.
Drop that one. Okay, so drop opportunities for homebound.
Well, in the explanation for this, I mean, I think when we say our number two is access to parks for all neighborhoods, I mean, access was something that came up a lot in that last meeting, we talked about this. And I think that that, you know, that can always be explained to be also access for people who have those limitations or are able to, you know, not just to our, the parks, but to the activities and everything else. So
Right.
Maybe that's.
So we need to, we need to, um, clarify that.
Well, as we're explaining access, you know, may, it's not just that it's not locked, you know, it's, it's that we're having a lot of those pathways, pathways for people to do it.
Well, especially because we're strict. It's park access. And one of our weaknesses is access to parks.
Mm-hmm.
But I know there's a difference, but I mean, it's kind of contradictory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Specifically just being that it's not all neighborhoods because we have a lot of those kind of areas that aren't have, don't have any way
Right.
to get there without crossing a road.
I think you did have that in one of the equitable parts.
So do you want us to change the language on it, check for the lower?
Equitable access to parks for all neighborhoods.
Okay. Uh, the other contradictory one is that our strength is volunteers volunteering and our weakness is to improve volunteer coordination.
Thinking that one, um.
You wouldn't call that a weakness. I just think it's something that you're always working to keep improving and keep as a strength. I don't really think it's a weakness at this point, especially because there's two of you coordinating things. So in my opinion, I would like to take that one off of weaknesses.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
You know, it's, the weaknesses are really hard because it's just, you know, even, even the more public involvement needed, you know, is that just mean for people to sit in and listen to the meetings, you know, I mean, uh, it, it's not important that people sit here and listen to this. It's that they, it's only solicit for feedback. We get it in a meaningful way, you know, and so. I don't know.
Also, it probably means on events and or, you know, designs at the parks and things like that, getting, you know, more public involvement done. Um. Not just sitting in a meeting, but maybe surveys or whatever.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, then with
That kind of.
volunteers and opportunities.
Four, five right now.
Yeah. And I guess just what we were talking about with the meetings and the kind of contradictoryness of access, I would maybe want to switch for two and three are ranked.
Okay.
So why is the number one? Did you guys choose your number one?
Limited resource.
So limited resources, what's already numbered, yeah. And would be more public involvement than access to parks for all neighbors, equitable access, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Trails in Clarkdale, which is going to be improved, but it is a weakness right now.
It sure is.
And then the number five would
Four.
Yeah. And the number five would be offer more classes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good. Everybody in agreeance on this? You're good? We're on this?
Yes.
Now. I'm in one. And especially because you haven't had a chance to see these yet. So I'm just gonna, um, I'm actually just going to give you a minute to read over them and, um, kind of put a checkmark next to your top and, uh, that you feel are important. Say your top five or six, six or seven, just get them out there and then let's, and then I'll go down the list and we'll see how many people checked the, each of the things. How's that sound? So we'll start with opportunities.
Okay.
Uh, that's a big one. You, like I said, you all were busy. I should have given you a limit, like give me four.
So you want us to check six of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that way, you know, you're six or seven if you're undecided. That way you can, I mean, get your top five though, so. Yeah. Hmm. No, just, just give them a chat and then, and then we can prioritize them afterwards. Once we identify the things that are alike. And if you need clarification on anything, because I did shorten some of your, your, um, inputs.
We start on the threat side if we finish the other side.
Yeah. How close are, are we getting?
Ready? Close.
Okay.
You want to start?
When can you expect the readings?
Oh, no, I was still working on the threads.
Okay. Yeah, we might as well knock them all out at one time.
Oh, that's cool. So we're just going to go down the list, maybe just list it. Raise hand if we selected that one or how are we going to do this process? Okay.
Yes.
So, um, if you march are in public space as a priority. Utilize email and text communications for reminder, volunteer opportunities. Maybe involvement. Housing developments, more parks and sponsorships. The new housing development is also good. Things like, um, us working with the developers to, to provide more recreation opportunities. So, so if that's something, like clarifying that change point at all. Uh, fundraisers for high schools scholarships. Many of the education areas of parks. Chances to meet people, lots of people to get together, engagement. Community members who share stories of the past. Or chances to stay down to play together throughout the year. Honor those who do for our community. So that was, um, a much longer input, but just, you know, like our first responders, our teachers have opportunities for them to, um, to recommend for the work of them. Be around concerts. I was hoping. Um, Parks and Rec local presence, um, could be increased by, uh, by the twenty twenty-three project development projects. Um, so that, that comment was about, um, because we're doing a lot of parks and recreations, doing a lot of, uh, projects, it's an opportunity to elevate parks and recreation while we do it, that's been the, and beautification of neighborhoods. So I'm, I'm guessing so that I, I, I don't remember put that down, but, um, I, I'm guessing that that's, um, beautification with parks kind of thing, not necessarily beautification of homes and yards and that kind of thing.
Hmm. Yeah.
So with parks.
Yeah.
As it relates to parks. Uh, creating functional recreation opportunities like recap, exercise stations, theme ports, walkways, et cetera. Intelligent signage. Creating a strategic planning that guides, educates, and reflects community values. Bringing more money fundraising grants. I'm very important and then it's one. Wait, you're ready to go? Improve quality of recreation options in all neighborhoods with grant. Improve quality of recreation options in all neighborhoods with grant money. Increase business partnerships to assist with funds and events. Efficient use of resources, time, money, and power. Shared services. Sustainability demonstration of concepts. Promote educational opportunities focusing on river ecosystems and shared shit. Trail connectivity.
For winner phone.
Hmm hmm.
That is three, right?
Yeah.
Trail system maps specific to our area for hikers, bikers, easy to identify trail. Programming for older residents to connect with each other in nature. Rich cultural background, diverse population. Providing better access to facilities and maintenance. Better access. High schoolers, volunteer program to help aging population. That's why I'm going to type those, you can do all. Extended volunteer opportunities. We don't have enough. And that's for asking. Okay, yeah. Now we're.
Going to say this did not.
Exactly.
You put them on the number two dot three on one.
Connectivity was a sure area, like one of my names. And then we're going to break it down into two.
There is six of them.
Our different public places. We had community education in part. Education areas and parks. We had beautification of neighborhoods. Creating functional recreation opportunities that we have. And strategic plan, creating the strategic plan. And promote educational opportunities focusing on the river ecosystem. And lastly, trail system maps. Two, four, five, six, seven. Two votes, the two people I covered on.
Well, Johnny, on, on those, a couple of these things, now that I read the list, and I know some of them were the ones that I had suggested. They seem less like they belong in a list of opportunities, and more like they seem like best practices that we've used in the past or are employing. You know, specifically things like. The, like the functional, like the functional opportunities, you know, that was something that we talked about before. Intelligence signs was something we talked about before when we got rid of the smoking in parks and stuff like that. And I wonder if there's, I wonder if they belong in this, in the plan in a different section. And so maybe that would be a way that we could win on this down a little bit, just to say, like, some of these, some of these can be bullet points in, like, how, how we'll achieve some of these things. I don't know if that's for some of the ones that are marked two, you know, like. Trail connectivity with, with maps that are.
Be combined.
Those could be combined pretty easily, maybe, maybe one or two others could be kind of shrunk down, I think that might help.
Yeah, maybe the educational areas and parks, and then the, um. The one with the river education too. Unless you guys think it's important to have that stated specific to the river.
I mean, or beautification of neighborhoods by using art of public places and parks and green space. That could combine a couple of those that would just be, maybe explain it better.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure I understand correctly. So there, the thing, other things that we're going to do right now is we're going to go through and pull out some things that can be, that will be included in the strategic plan, but aren't necessarily. The best place.
Opportunity.
No, okay, so can you write those again, Ben, the ones that you think, and then we can.
Oh, I was, I was, the, the two that jumped out at me were the intelligent signage, which is maybe kind of the same as the, as the maps that really identify trails really well. And then the functional opportunities, those were some that I thought could just be like our best practices when we're looking at designing these spaces.
Okay.
So pull out the creating functional recreation opportunities, pull that off.
Oh, yeah, I would say just put those like in just kind of. Because I'm sure there's somewhere where we say, like, what are some of our targets, and that can include having open spaces, educational, you know, like. Some of these are like more about how we would design spaces given the chance, you know?
Right, and then, and that's part of this process is, you know, we really want to elevate the things that are most important up to the top. And it doesn't mean that these aren't important, there are things that we can include in the plan. I mean, it doesn't mean that they're not going away, just because they're not going down. They are completed, there's nobody that can, that's in the top five.
Well, and then combine. Promote educational opportunities with the river ecosystem and in parks. Combine those two.
On education.
Cause there's.
Functional recreation.
So we pulled out the creating functional, that's not going to be on this list, I'm saying to condense it down to still get us to a top five. Is community edge of educational areas in parks and focusing on the river ecosystem.
And education as well.
Yeah, because those two are both ranked with two votes. Did you write something like that in there, Shell?
Yeah, so I heard trail connectivity map.
That's combined, yeah. Yeah.
And then the third one that sounded like you guys were combining is something about beautification of neighborhoods through parks, including public art elements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's still two.
So that, that was three.
Then the one that was had two votes was planning, which is creating a strategic plan that guides, educates.
And the one about the exercise stations, it belongs to one maybe, uh, once I have it covered yet.
Saying that we have eliminated that, I didn't know that we have. Why did they?
Creating a strategic plan, I think, is.
Because that just becomes like a practice, not an opportunity. And then the trails. Hmm hmm.
Do we need one more after?
Well, I guess I have a question about that, for, uh, uh, the ones that are about specifically under resources. I don't know, I mean, I just don't know enough about the SWOT analysis, you know, if that's where the, where we make that. Where we focus on that, you know, because they, those all kind of fall in the same thing about, we don't have that much, we try to bring in a lot of grants. You know, I mean, obviously those are out there, but that's, I, I, I don't know, is opportunities, we've addressed it in some of our strengths and everything else. Is it, is this also a place that maybe, I mean, that's, those five are all kind of about that, you know?
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe some of them all up.
Threats we have, that, that, a threat, so here we, we're, we're contradiction, but opportunities, the opportunity is to find more money, which we're always doing.
Always.
Sort of stating it obvious.
Yeah.
Um, and, and then, of course, you know, the threat being that we don't find anything yet, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
And something about increasing resources, the Parks and Rec through grant pursuit, municipal funding, volunteers.
Shared services, partnership with businesses, I mean.
I think we got the two.
Just having a lot of streams that resources coming in.
Right, because there's always the chance of more businesses opening up and new people coming to the area, so that's what the housing development one too, it's kind of the same thought. So you want to put that as number five, because housing development is going to keep happening. But that'd be the first one.
Great.
Got it?
Yeah. Development, yeah, so they also want a developer.
Yes.
So increase resources through grant pursuit, municipal funding, volunteers, shared services. Community partnership and developer agreement, et cetera. Yeah.
Jump over one.
Yeah, increasing resources to all of them, so we have.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we have five. Okay, does anybody have any issues or anything that they felt really should be known to get above anything? Giving an option. Speeding up.
Well, I like that there were a lot of things in here that were about connecting people to people, you know, but I think that's maybe where, when we worked on the vision statement, stuff like that, we, we really had a nod towards some of those things.
Okay, good. Now, before we begin this process, Ben, have you evaluated this list in the same way?
I don't know if I can cross any off, well, I mean, I think it's the same thing, you know, these, we have a lot of really good categories, and several of us said very similar things in different ways, so.
I did try to combine those, I should, but I did want to leave. There was a little bit of difference in days, I went on the, anybody? Who, who did that? Okay, so I, I guess we'll go through the same process, that seems to work pretty well, and we's getting a couple of things to the top. So under threats, having council and community stakeholders not understand the priority in the strategic plan. Feeling to have developers make improvements to public areas as part of their development agreement.
So with that.
Or, should I do?
Sure.
Clear pressure. It'll be the last one, picture done.
And then changes in council priority from plan. Brutal is lawsuits. Lots of challenging grant writers to help seek her funding.
That one, I know.
Loss of on.
Volunteers, so really it's all fine and the same, I mean, if we don't have a good lead of volunteers, we don't get as much. So lots of grant writers and let's define our recent volunteers. If you're okay with that. And how many people wrote for them?
We're combining the two, okay, and yeah.
Staffing and budget limitations that are not available. Not having funds to support our reuse fire and maintenance. And that's honestly, it's not really a Parks and Rec related thing, but I put it on there. Cost and volume, cost. And volunteers to fund more events, so more events means more, potentially more money because of staff time and then also having volunteers to. That costs for additional communication, so that went with the opportunity to have. It just looked like that was. So. Long timelines on grant application and tracking phases, I wasn't exactly sure about that, but anybody vote for it?
I think that dovetails with the loss of volunteers, you know, if you have somebody who's in that process for 12 of the 16 months, that's pretty detrimental, you know, because.
Yes.
Trying to pick up where somebody left off, I think that was the idea.
Here are changing the use of current asset. Here are changes in my. Uh, so these take lots of time to manage and look. So it's not, it's not all. Using volunteers, whatever you talked about. Under a whole bunch of sustainability, funding and river access points. Longevity of park equipment. Too many people in our area just swimming, not small time now, we've been putting water in slow and erasing. Rapid noise pollution fine, especially in the. Fire threats from burn rate fire on me if not. Making our Clarkdale and under Oakley suburb like Husker Valley or Gilbert.
But you really do.
Using old design concepts, not we can, not we can. Letting growth approach on green space corridors. Climate change concerns. Okay, well, this is a little easier, so we have two fives. Failing to let developers make improvements in public areas and. Letting growth approach on green space and corridors. Which. Kind of goes along with the developer, not really the two different things. So you're going to make one of those one and two. Over your top five?
I feel like the volunteers would be top number, would be number one, even though that had four votes, but.
Okay, so volunteers.
That was one of the number four votes.
Any. Volunteers being top.
Letting growth approach on green space corridors, is that even something that we can control?
Well, that's a really good question.
I mean, it seems like a council.
You can, you have the control through this plan to designate to a lot of discussions about protecting green space. So you can, you can put it in the plan and it becomes a guide for community development and for the council. Now, the council may, they may not agree, and at some point, and I forgot to tell you all this, but at some point. This, we will have a meeting, a joint meeting with council to go over everything that we're developing here. So council may have, you know, some suggestions or different ideas that they, you know, they need to hear what your priorities are. And if the priorities right now, and I think there's probably a lot of people that look this way, is protecting the green space and making sure that the development, that the growth is smarter than how it's being done. And this guides that, so yes, maybe as well. Did you have a question?
Yeah, are we going to combine those two? The failing to have developers make improvements to public areas, that part, and then combine it with letting growth approach on green spaces, or we're going to try to keep those separate?
Um, I, I think there are two separate, entirely separate. Things, because, you know, the, the green spaces, keeping the green space without development and the, and or, I, there is, I guess there is some crossover.
Well, I would see it as, one, one of those is guidance for, for development, like from our community development, et cetera, to say that, hey. To say that, hey, it's really important that we're keeping these, these priorities of parks recreation. At the forefront of some of those discussions as people are coming into development community, while the other about the green spaces more. Uh, advisement to council and future councils to say, hey, when you have extra resources. Buying up portions of land that can extend our trail system. Or, or deciding not to sell off pieces that, that the town is able to do land swaps with or that sort of thing. To, to increase that and, and continue to buffer those spaces, so. I really think they kind of have two different target audiences, if, if we select them differently.
How many votes do those two get?
They both have danger of five.
So could we have one as one and one as two, and then the volunteering that we were gonna combine possibly as three? As the third one? Anything else have more?
Did you have one of the fives is um more important than the other? Do you care which one is one and which one is two?
Well, to go, to go back, I do like Alan's point about having the one about maintaining that volunteer core. Of grant writers and people who are giving to the, that certain thing as, as the number one, cuz I think it's, I mean. Even though it was four votes instead of five, I would also agree that would be, be good when that is our, is our top, is our top.
The most detrimental thing to happen to the Parks and Rec department.
The most immediate, I would say.
Yeah, I would go volunteer, green space, uh, three would be uh, having developers. That's, that's, that would be my.
Then.
Okay, so back to, I'm, I'm sorry, Ben, I forgot, I. I was, I missed which one you went and wanted to.
Volunteer, green space, developers.
I need that, two is green space.
Based on the votes, changes in council priorities would be the next threat.
That was one last quote.
Um, it says failing to make develop, failing to have developers make improvements as part of developer agreements. And if you wanted to, you could say, including preserving green space prioritization of parks and trails, or even public parks and trails. Because improvements as part of the developer agreement is kind of broad, so if you know what sort of improvements, really the only things that we would. Probably have a hand in would be trails, parks and green space, which.
Green or, or open space, yeah.
I mean, I feel like they stay different, cuz when you think of like developers and my, I'm thinking like housing developments, that would be like what we have going on now, where they're required to put in parks and trails. Green space like that can entail us with like commercial growth and that gets more of a broad like.
Oh, well, the open space is something that's often negotiated with the developers because people really like that, it'll, it leaves room in between houses. So it's still something that we have in our strategic plan and the general plan. Um, and it's something that Parks and Rec has wanted to increase it within our um. When we did our survey in twenty twenty, that was in the top three things that people said they want to see more of was that open space. Okay, so we'll just put failing to have developers make improvements as part of the developer agreement. And then keep the green space or open space corridors.
Massage some of these a little bit.
Okay, so then, one of the three, I know, uh, number four. The other four was um.
Council priorities. Yeah. And then the other highest vote was staffing and budget limitations, so we can decide which of those would be number four and what should be number five. I would say staffing and budget limitations for number four, and that's my opinion. And then council priorities and plan changes would be the number five.
So I have, number one is um volunteers, all the things. Number two being letting growth approach on green space and corridors, number three is failing to have developers. Um, we have improvements to public areas. And number four is staffing, budget limitations, funding, and number five is changes, changes in council priorities. Yes? We will go, so in the, between now and our next meeting, I would encourage you to um review the. As we'll look at that and how the um items relate to that. As far as um, you know, how they, how they fit into the town strategic plan. Um, and, and we may go into the general plan, but probably it's. Depends on how quickly we get through that, um, and then we can uh do the general plan. Yeah, so there's a lot of um personal motivation, green space. Any questions or other comments on that?
Okay. Okay, so just really quickly before I open the next item. Um, I do remember last time that we came in poll elections, we waited for everybody to be present before we did an election. We put table that to a following meeting, so I don't know if that's a thought we should have or if we should just go for it. Yeah, I'm okay with that, I just didn't want, you know, Jerry to feel like she wanted to be a part of that, so. Okay, well, then I will go ahead and open the item. Chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Commission, we're going to discuss, consider and act upon the selection of a chairperson, term of one year.
Are you wanting to have another term?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I am willing to, I only know one meeting that I plan on missing in the next upcoming year, so. I haven't missed one yet, but I'm, I'm not gonna be here for the April one, just gonna put that out there. I had something going on that week, yeah. But I, I mean, I'm not opposed to staying, I mean, unless somebody wants to step up, I'm also not opposed.
Um, I, I, I do wanna just um talk the first line in our background. That um, that we haven't done, because Alan's been so gracious to continue in the role. Is um, that the role of chair and vice chair gen- generally rotates every year, that doesn't mean that it has to. And that's totally, you know, I've seen that situation, we've also had this situation where we had the same person for a while. Um, it's really up to you guys, but I just, I didn't wanna, you know, talk about that, the role itself. Is doing what Alan's been doing, that you've been observing and running the meeting. And um, and working with uh staff to help create the, create the agenda. Um, and uh, yeah, and sign on behalf of the commission, so. So it's open, I wanted to have you have an open discussion about it and decide what, how well you guys wanna move forward.
Anything, I don't, I'm good either way, does anybody, did anybody else want to?
Yeah. Anyone, anyone? Okay, you want a trade spot? Okay, all right, then somebody makes a motion? I don't know, that's appropriate for myself to make the motion?
Voting.
Yes, you're voting, okay, sorry.
You're voting. Yeah.
I just wanted to make, I should, yeah, it's a very important vote.
Yes, it is, it's a very important vote. Yes, you get, you get to participate.
Does she even make the motion?
Anybody can make the motion.
Well, I'm happy to move that uh Alan remains chairperson, Cheryl remains vice chairperson for the coming year.
Only doing, we're only doing one first, we have a second, we have a second item for the vice chair.
Okay, uh, then I would, I would make a motion that Alan is uh to serve as the chair for next year.
I would second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Okay, I stay as the chairperson for now here. Okay, the next item, as we just discussed a separate, is the vice chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So same discussion in regards to Cheryl as vice chairperson remaining or somebody else?
I'm willing to remain, but if somebody else wants to, please feel free to.
Yeah, that's your big shot right there. Who's gonna be here in April for sure? Are you gonna be here on April twelfth, can you?
I can't, I have a person right.
Okay.
Well, I would move that Cheryl serves as the vice chairperson for, for the year, um, for this year as well.
I'll second that. All in favor? All right.
Oh, we don't have to make any moves.
Chairs or anything like that? All right, future agenda items, would anybody like to suggest any future agenda items? Besides what we can anticipate will be there anyways.
Uh, we talked about once before, but about possibly looking at the bathrooms not being gendered at the parks.
We do.
I mean, we could, I mean, it's none of that burning priority, but you know, one of these days we could maybe have it on the thing and. See about, see what would take to make that change.
Also, this doesn't really put under us, but I get, I think the toilet in the women's bathroom is loose.
Well, if you're gonna perpetuate this, this gendered bathroom therapy.
I would.
The toilet is loose? You mentioned it. All right, anything else on future agenda items, everybody? Good, all right.
Definitely got some things to put on there for you, so. Um, including trails, where we're out on the trails, we're around about the Caviar, um.
The update on that.
The grant, the grant, the mobile grant, so, yeah.
Okay, no further items, is there any objection to adjournment? Oh, all right, the meeting is adjourned six forty-three.
Stop the recording, Shell.